Please rise for invocation by Danny Ruby from Crossroads Ministries and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance from Trenton Vincent, Troop 166.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity that you just give us a city that we can still pray in, Lord, and we just ask you to, as we gather here tonight for business, Lord, we just give it all the glory to you, Lord, and we just allow you to let us do it through love and concern for your city, Lord, that you just bless each one here tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Tinsley?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fox?
Here.
Mayor Patton Crocker?
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at the previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Need your name and address, please.
My name is Jack Altman. My address is 2404 West Maud Street here in Popper Bluff, and I'm also residing as the president of the Butler County Fair Board. I inquired here a while back, like to address the council about the Butler County Fair having political figures renting booth space at the county fair. You know, there's a lot of county and other fairs all around the state of Missouri that have local, state, and US politicians campaigning at their events, but I'm afraid by saying that we can't have them rent a booth space at our county fair that I wouldn't want to get any of the fair board members in some kind of altercation or some kind of put them in a position of saying that we're trying to discriminate against them or any other group by that aspect. I can understand that you have some kind of city ordinance against it, but I thought that when you rent the property for the county fair or any other event, I thought that kind of the ownership kind of conveyed to the rentee, to the leasee.
I'm not sure that...
Well, I can address that. Anytime that you rent out, which is essentially what we're doing, our property, the landowner can dictate certain restrictions and conditions upon the use of that land, and we currently do have that policy. So it's not a legal issue as much as it's a policy issue. If you believe that the policy needs to be reviewed and the City Council needs to change their mind about that, you certainly can go about that, you know, that process. And there are other entities that do that, other county fairs, state fairs, the college, when they do their merchant showcase and Ag Expo and so forth, they do rent out space to political candidates, political office holders that may not be running for office in that particular year. But it's not a legal issue, it's a policy issue. The city has the authority, clearly has the authority, and has exercised in the past as a matter of policy to prohibit that. And if you believe, and the citizens of Popper Bluff believe, that that policy ought to be reviewed and revised, then certainly this council has the authority to do that.
Okay. I think, you know, by withholding us just from the booths, we cut back on a lot of funds, you know, from the fair example, you know, but is it that we can't have it because just in that area or in any city property?
The city policy is that anytime we have an activity on city property that partisan politics and the renting of booths and so forth to either, if we're doing it ourselves or if we're subletting it to someone else, that restriction applies.
So they can do it at the Ag Expo, but it don't apply?
Well, the Ag Expo is operated, you know, by the college, but if they're renting the city property, then our city policies would apply to it.
Okay, but you were just saying they could do it at the Ag Expo, but...
No, well, the Ag Expo, I shouldn't, that's a misstatement because the merchant showcase is held on the campus of Three Rivers. The Ag Expo used to be, and in recent years we've moved it to the Coliseum. The college has moved it to the Coliseum and rented space from, it's controlled by the location of where the facility is, and if it's city property, then the policy applies.
Okay.
I thought the Ag Expo was run by the Extension Office.
Well, it's run in conjunction with the Extension Office and the Agricultural Department at the college. It's a joint effort, but they use our facilities, they rent our facilities to run that.
So what is the difference in that and the fair board renting the park?
That's the question.
There's not any difference.
So why can the Ag Expo have political...
They don't.
They don't.
They do.
Well, they should.
Not at the Coliseum. They shouldn't, they shouldn't be having it. The policy applies across the board.
There were all kinds of booths set up at the sheriff race and everything was...
At the Ag Expo or at the merchant showcase?
At the Ag Expo in the Coliseum.
I don't know about that.
We had a policy in January.
I have no idea.
Who was the commissioner that ran for, I remember very well, they were all set up in there when they were running for sheriff and stuff?
I remember in '14 that we couldn't in the Coliseum, you couldn't have a booth or hand out anything.
Yeah, there shouldn't be.
I mean...
I don't know the history of it, I can research it for you. I do know it's an existing policy that dates back a while.
I guess I would question what the purpose...
Yeah, but this last year the chili cook-off they did.
Have you ever seen a county fair or state fair where they don't allow political...
Constituents, that's what my question is, you know, is there, I mean, I understand it's your policy, but is there a reason why the city adopted that policy that the constituents couldn't campaign on city property? Was there an issue in the past or something, or...
I'm sorry, I can't answer the history of it because I just don't know. It's one that I can certainly research the history on, and we can also, you know, research, are there any other local governmental entities that have those restrictions? I've been to a lot of them personally, and I can't recall ever seeing one where it wasn't allowed, so frankly, I don't know the history of it. There may have been something unique to Popper Bluff in the past that caused some problems that caused a former city council here to adopt that policy. I just don't know, but I can do some research and try to bring back to the council some history on it. It doesn't, I'm not going to opine on it, but it just seems a little bit unusual to me that a municipality would not take good green money from any legitimate entity, you know, when we're, you know, when we're operating something, or allow our renters to do that. You know, I know, for instance, it's a totally different situation, but the merchant showcase, they promote political campaigns, political office holders, and they love to have their money to set up their booths and do their thing, so I really don't know the history of it.
I almost believe, like he said, you know, to disallow it is almost hindering our free process. I mean, why would you not allow them, that public, anytime you gather the public, to allow them to voice their...
I guess my question being there is, at what point does somebody say, "Well, you're discriminating against me." How do I break that down to them, you know? I mean, we allow, I hate to use example, but if we allow a church group or youth, or Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, I mean, how do I define between one and the other? Where does it, where do I draw the line? Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, gentlemen. It really does. I'm not defending the policy. I'm just telling you that's what the policy is. I don't know how long it's been there, I don't know why it was there. There had to be some history at some point, some problem that occurred, maybe a couple of political candidates got into a fistfight. I have no idea, but it's been there for a while, and it probably is one, sir, that, you know, with the council permission, I'll do some research and provide some data on it to them.
Mr. Mayor, could we entertain that idea of checking into it and then getting back with him so that we could be familiar with the parameters of the ordinance that we might be able to adjust or not adjust?
I think it'd be good if Mr. Ritz has already volunteered to research it, and I don't know if he could wait to bring that back at the next meeting or...
Well, you could probably notify him sooner than that if we could find out an answer on it, uh-huh. Unless it's something we would have to make a vote on, of course.
As soon as the next...
How soon do you have to have the information?
I was going to say, if the fair is coming up...
Fair, I've got less than six weeks, and I've got people wanting to participate. I mean, I'm talking governors, US senators, but they're kind of upset that they can't participate in it.
It's because it's city property. I know the Delta Fair allows it, but they own their own property, it's kind of like the college owning their own property, and they can set their rules, but since it's on city property is the twist of this one.
Well, if I were to plain and simple, the question was asked to me today was, "Why is it not considered discrimination?" That was the...
Because they own the property and they can pass an ordinance to choose or not choose what they want to have.
I guess that was my thing. I knew, I'd been told that it wasn't allowed, and I just wanted some more insight on if there was a reason behind it, or, you know, was there problems in the past, or, you know...
I have no idea, but if we could research it and then get back to us and let us know, we could make a better educated decision on it.
I think it's a very fair question, and one that deserves some research and at least some review by the council, and if it turns out there's some bona fide legitimate reason, this particular government has decided, local government has decided to do that, it's within their power to do it, subject to discrimination laws, and you raise some good points in that area as well, that just, my knee jerk is that there better be an awfully compelling reason why we're doing it and discriminating against a particular class of people, that being candidates or office holders as opposed to churches or other organizations, yeah.
And one of the politicians proposed to me, what I just said a while ago, is that, "Do you know of a fair that does not allow it?" And I'm, you know, at the state fair and all the fairs, it's a big deal for the politicians to...
I wonder, because used to, at the Women Aware Conference, we would have political booths there, but there hasn't been for the last several years, and I guess it's because of that policy.
I don't remember that coming into play.
And they're probably losing a lot of money.
I attended the conference in Columbia this year, and I'd say, I don't want to give a percentage, but there's a high number of people of counties that have their county fair at city parks and things like that, and they all...
They just don't have an ordinance in place like we do, is the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would be more than happy to research it because that's a very valid question. And then I think we should also be consistent and not allow it for one chili cook-off and not Women Aware and not Butler County Fair. I mean, we need to be consistent one way or the other with it, once we're familiar.
Our policy with our property should be consistent, no matter who's running.
Yes, no matter who.
And Councilwoman Horton, I don't know if Women Aware made the decision that they didn't want it, or if maybe politicians just didn't come.
I don't think we knew that it was there because I think they've been trying to sell booths to politicians.
She just brought up the chili cook-off, there was definitely politicians...
Which is a violation, yeah.
Doing chili cook-off at the Coliseum.
Didn't the politician win it?
But I know in '14 it was ineligible.
Didn't the politician win it this year, or got a award?
I think a politician entered as an entry, for one thing, but that's another whole animal. I think we should just research it and get back to you as quick as we can.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention today.
And if the council will give me just a couple, three days, I'll do a memo on it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Another citizen's input, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action by the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented by the city clerk.
Second. Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Workshop items for discussion. Item A, the representative from Craft Miles and Tatum will appear before the City Council to present the audit for fiscal year 2015.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to be here to present the 2015 audit to you this evening. There's a lot on your agenda, so I'll be as brief as I can, unless it starts to rain, and then we'll go until it stops. I believe each of the council members has a copy of the financial statements in front of you, and I believe you received a copy of the audit prior to this evening, so if there's any questions as I'm going through that you have in regards to your initial review, I'll be more than happy to answer them as we go along. If you'll notice, the financial statements are 90 pages long. We won't cover every page this evening. We'll spend a majority of our time discussing the basic financial statements. We'll cover a few of the note disclosures, and then we'll conclude with the review of the federal expenditures for the city and a synopsis of the audit results. So if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and get started, and if we'll turn to the first page beyond the table of contents, this is the independent auditor's report. In this report, it outlines management's responsibility for the financial statements. It also outlines our responsibility as the city's auditor, which is to express an opinion on the financial statements that you have in front of you. So if you turn one page to the second page of the report, very first paragraph is the opinion paragraph. We have issued an unmodified opinion on these financial statements, which means in our opinion, the financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And if you'll look down a couple more paragraphs, the second paragraph, under the emphasis of matter, this paragraph outlines that the city in 2015 implemented new accounting guidance, which is GASB 68. This is in relation to the city's pension plans, and you will hear me reference this pension, new guidance throughout the presentation. This is a standard that's been around for a few years, it's been coming out, and 2015 was the first year for implementation for all state and local governments. So if there's no questions, we'll turn it over to page 11, and we'll get started with our review of the financial statements. Beginning on page 11 through 13, you'll find the government-wide financial statements. These financial statements report the city as a whole, and as you can see, divided between governmental and business-type activities. About a quarter of the way down this first page, which is the statement of net position, you'll see total assets for the city were a little over $140 million for December 31st, 2015. Overall, total assets decreased roughly $760,000, so a minor decrease for 2015. And really just a couple of things I want to point out in this list of assets. The first one is the top line, which is the city's unrestricted cash and cash equivalents. You'll notice the city carried unrestricted cash and cash equivalents of a little over $16.3 million, most of that being in the business-type activities. Overall, the city saw an increase of $1.4 million in their unrestricted cash, $1.8 million increase in business-type activities, while the government activities saw a decrease of approximately $460,000. And if you'll drop to the last line item in that list is the capital assets that are depreciable. The city carried $89.8 million worth of capital assets that were depreciable for 2015. Overall, assets were down $1.4 million, most of which is contributable to depreciation expense. And then the next section below your assets is the deferred outflows of resources. This is a new line item in relation to GASB 68. You can see the pension deferrals, total deferred outflows, $3.9 million for 2015. We'll jump down to your liabilities. Total liabilities for the city, $73.5 million. Overall, the city's liabilities increased $11.3 million for 2015. Really two items that make up the bulk of that increase. If you'll notice, the third line from the bottom of your liabilities is long-term debt. The city had long-term debt of approximately $43.7 million. Overall, that liability increased approximately $2.5 million, some of that being the TIF bonds that were for Series 2015A. The remainder of that were the fire truck loan from 2015. And then your net pension liability, you can see, is $9.5 million. This is an increase of $9.2 million from the net pension obligation that was reported on last year's financial statements. Once again, this large increase is due to the city's implementation of the GASB 68 related to the city's pensions, and that being the loggers and the police and the fire pension. Deferred inflows of resources, you can see there, it's pension deferrals, once again, due to the implementation of GASB 68, the city is now required to report deferred inflows of resources, approximately $1.5 million for 2015. And then the last section is the net position. This shows the city's net position for the year, $68.8 million overall, and as you can see, a majority of the city's net position is in the net investment in capital assets, which was a little over $58 million for 2015. If there's no questions, we'll turn over to page 12. Here on page 12 is the statement of activities. Once again, government-wide statement, divided between governmental and business-type activities. The far left-hand column, you'll see that the city had total governmental activities expenses of a little over $21.1 million. Overall, the city's government-wide expenses is down $16 million, and if you'll remember, last year was the first year for the TIF notes that were implemented. And then the fifth line from the bottom, you'll see the economic development line item, $993,000. And then last year, that would have been where your $13.2 million worth of TIF notes were listed, so that's the reason for the big decrease in the governmental activities. Most every line item in the governmental activities is pretty comparable to the prior year, and if you drop down to your business-type activities, you'll see total expenses for business-type activities, $45.7 million. Once again, this is a decrease of approximately $6 million from 2014. $5.4 million of that was a decrease in the municipal utilities line item. $2 million of those expenses would have been the cable expenses for last year, that's not reported in this year's financial statements through the cell, and then the electric transmission in the municipal utilities is actually down $2.7 million from last year. If there's no questions, we'll turn over to page 13, continuation of the statement of activities. This will list your general revenues, all of your taxes, once again, divided by governmental and business-type activities. And then the third line from the bottom, you'll see the total change in net position for the year, $1.2 million decrease, $716,000 of that being business-type activities, and $545,000 being governmental activities. And then the line right above, right below that, you'll see net position for December 31st, 2014, as restated. The beginning net position was restated due to the implementation of the new GASB that came out, and we'll reference a note here in just a few minutes that will outline how much the net position was restated. If there's no questions, we'll continue on to the fund financial statements. Pages 14 through 22 will represent the city's fund financial statements. These are the financial statements that most city officials are used to seeing on a day-to-day basis. Pages 14 through 17, you'll notice, will be your governmental funds. There are two major funds, the general and the Highway 67 tax, and then your non-major funds, which will be provided in more detail in the financial statements on schedules one and two. But at this point, I'd like to turn over just a couple pages to page 16. And here in page 16, you'll see the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. And real quickly, the third line from the bottom, you can see that there was a net decrease in general fund fund balance of a little over $2.1 million. Your non-major funds saw an increase of $1.9 million, and if you looked at the far right-hand column, governmental funds as a whole, there was a decrease of $264,193. If there's no questions, we'll turn over to page 18. Here on pages 18 through 22 will be your proprietary funds. These pages will provide the same information that we looked at on pages 12 and 13, only they'll provide in more detail. And if you'll notice here on page 18, there were two major proprietary funds, which would be municipal utilities, as well as the Black River Coliseum, and then your non-major enterprise funds, which is the golf and airport fund. Those will be, once again, shown in more detail in schedules three and four in the back of the financials, as well as municipal utilities will be schedules five and six in the back of the financial statements. But overall, looking at net position, we referenced net position of $59 million for business-type activities. You can see that a majority of the business-type activities net position is located in the municipal utilities, with just a little over $50.4 million for 2015. And then turning to pages 19 and 20, this will be the statements of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Once again, this is the information that we referenced on pages 12 and 13. At the bottom of this first page, you can see the operating loss and income for municipal utilities, the Coliseum, as well as the non-major enterprise funds. Once again, same information that you've seen previous. And if you turn over to page 20, continuing with this statement, you can see that the change in net position that we referenced, negative $716,000. You can see that municipal utilities had a decrease in net position of $1.3 million. The Coliseum saw an increase in their net position of $577,000, and the non-major enterprise funds, slight increase of $87,228. And then turn one page with me to page 21. Here on page 21, this is a statement of cash flows for the proprietary funds. Once again, this shows all of the funds, the major funds, and then your two non-major funds. And if you'll notice, the third line from the bottom, you can see the net increase and decrease in the cash. Municipal utilities had an increase of $1.9 million. Coliseum had a decrease in their cash of $116,000. The golf course, slight increase of $108, and then the airport fund had a negative cash impact, no cash impact, excuse me, for December 31st, 2015. If there's no questions, we'll turn over now to page 23. And starting on page 23 through 58, the council will find the notes to the financial statements. Once again, we won't read every note disclosure, but there are a few that I think are important enough for a comment to the council this evening, so if you would, turn with me to page 38, and we'll briefly take a look at note four. Beginning on page 38 and concluding on page 39 are the capital assets. We referenced previously that capital assets saw a decrease in 2015. Here you can see the activity. The first half of the page is governmental activities, beginning at the bottom of page 38 and concluding on 39 are your business-type activities. This page will outline additions to capital assets for the city, as well as in retirements, once again, between governmental and business-type activities. If there's no questions, just a few more pages. Page 42 will be the second note disclosure that I'd like to point out and discuss briefly this evening. Here on page 42 is the long-term debt. We referenced, once again, earlier that there was an increase in long-term debt. Here on page six, top of the page is governmental activities, bottom half is business-type activities. You can see the additions to the debt for the city, as well as deductions, and if you look at the far right-hand column, you'll see a column that references current portion. That'll be the current maturities, the current principal payments that the city will pay out in 2016. And if you turn one page to page 43, there's a schedule at the top of page 43 that I believe is a good overview, kind of a good note to take for council members. Here on page 43, you can see the principal and interest payments broken down between governmental and business-type activities that the city will expend for the next five years individually, and then five-year increments thereafter. So for 2016, looking across to the far right-hand column, a little over $3.1 million in principal payments for 2016, and $2.1 million in interest payments. So that kind of gives the council an idea of what debt expenditures they're looking forward to in the years to come.
Can I ask one?
Okay.
Page 42, this capital leased obligation, electric compartment plan addition.
Correct.
10.3, what is that?
It's the electric department. I believe that's the additions for the council members who've been around a long time, additions for the downtown.
The generator.
Yep.
Ten million dollars.
And that's just the balance of two thousand and fourteen. So I'm not sure what the original balance was, but that's... And this year, the current balance is nine point six million is the balance at the end of the year. If there's no questions, we'll turn over to page fifty-seven. It'll be note sixteen. We've referenced several times the implementation of Gatsby sixty-eight. We referenced on page thirteen that the beginning net position of the city was re-stated due to this implementation. Here on page sixteen, it outlines every net position that was changed. The first row is the governmental and business-type activities as a whole, followed by the Black River Coliseum. The middle section are the golf and airport fund individually, along with your non-major enterprise fund prize totals. And then the bottom section is the municipal utilities. The December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, as originally reported, would have been the amount that you would have seen at the end of the financial statements last year. The middle row is the Gatsby implementation amount. For example, your governmental activities, Gatsby sixty-eight's implementation, negative impact of the city, six point four million, in following suit. And then the bottom line is the restated amount that we discussed previously on page If there's no questions on that, we'll conclude with a review of the city's scheduled expenditures. So we'll turn over to the last, the financial statements, page eighty-six. Beginning on page eighty-six and concluding on page eighty-seven, is the scheduled expenditures of federal awards. These pages will outline the city's federal expenditures by U.S. departments, as well as by individual grants. And if you'll notice on page eighty-seven, total federal expenditures for the city was a little over nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. In two thousand and fifteen, the threshold to require a single audit was increased to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So you can see the city, two hundred five thousand above that threshold, which required a single audit for us to be performed for two thousand and fifteen. And then the last thing is over on page eighty-nine. Page eighty-nine is Schedule ten. This is the Schedule of Finding and Questioning Costs. Part one is the summary of the auditor's results. And this list of items, I believe, provides just a quick overview of the results of our audit. We'll go through this list. The first one is an unmodified opinion that was issued on the financial statements. That was the first letter that we referenced. There were no material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting, which would be in kernel controls related to the financial statements that we've discussed. There were no material weaknesses that we needed to disclose. Our audit did not disclose any non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements. Everything from here to the bottom is referencing to the federal expenditures. There were no material weaknesses in internal control over major programs. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance for major programs. And I've mentioned in the past that every federal dollar that the government allows you to spend, there's a potential for, for twelve or thirteen compliance requirements, depending upon the grant that the city is in the major program. So in our opinion, the city was in compliance over the major program. There was no audit findings that we were required to report in accordance with federal regulations. And if you'll notice, the major program that was tested this year for compliance was the highway planning and construction program. The dollar threshold to distinguish between type A and type B programs was seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then the last line on item that says that the city of Popper Bluff was determined to be a low-risk auditee. And in order for that to, to happen, the city is required to prepare financial statements on a GAAP basis of financials, which they do. There can be no material weaknesses in internal control for the two preceding years, and the city is required to submit the data collection form of the federal clearinghouse timely. And so the city met all of those requirements, which allowed the city to be considered low-risk for federal expenditures. Any questions over the financial statements that, that we've gone over? I know it's rather brief, but the financial statements are pretty extensive. The Gatsby sixty-eight increased the financial statements by about ten pages, and so they just continue to, to grow and grow. The next new Gatsby coming out, just for your reference, will be in correlation to the OPEB plans. They will probably do basically the same thing with those OPEB plans as they've done with pensions. So that's something to, to look forward to in the two, three years down the road. But any questions that you, that you may have? I'd just thank Mark and his staff here at City Hall for, for enduring our time here. We sit down in the conference room for about a month, ask a lot of questions, dig through a lot of boxes and get receipts. And they're, they're very gracious with their time, as well as the staff at municipal utilities. We spent approximately two weeks up there. So we, we just appreciate their efforts, allow us to get in and get out as quickly as we can.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion to second to accept the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen audit as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, the city council review of bid received for the city of Popper Bluff Telecommunications Services.
Yes, we put out telephone service for the city of Popper Bluff. We just received one bid, which is from Big River Communications, which is who we currently have. The amount was four thousand, three oh six, sixty-five monthly.
Need a motion, move it tonight?
Yes.
Make a motion, we move this to the voting session tonight.
Motion second, move this item to the voting session tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council review of proposed grant agreement with the Department of Public Safety relative to a local law enforcement block grant for the police department.
Yes, the police department's asking to apply for a grant of just under ten thousand dollars for materials directly related to basic law enforcement functions and officer safety. If you have any specific questions, Dave Sutton is here to answer those. As you can see, it's a rather lengthy application.
A lot of work for ten thousand dollars.
I know.
Yeah.
Dave's got it down to his science.
I would say Dave enjoys doing that, he probably doesn't.
Not entirely, but...
Is this a pure grant, some matching grant?
I'm sorry?
Is this just pure grant?
Yeah, it's pure grant, there's no matching funds or anything.
No matching, I wouldn't turn down.
Okay, I'll need a motion second, move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
I'd make a motion, we move item C to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Dave. Item D, the city council review supplemental agreement number two from Schultz Engineering for the city's street paving project, STP five-one-zero-zero-zero-nine.
Yes, this would move ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents from the design phase to the construction phase. And that's the street paving that we're doing. I think they're supposed to start in October of this year. It won't take them long. Right now, we're raising manholes, and the city will go in and do some grading.
Make a motion, we move item D to the voting session tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, you second it. I have one question, so this isn't going to cost us anything extra, like a change order?
No, this is just moving money from...
Moving the funds.
Something was left up, or under, I guess, come under bid on the design part, now just moving...
Right, it's just moving over to construction fund to help, actually help the city, assist the city.
Is this something that's absolutely necessary on the construction part for grading it, you know, that fine on the grading?
I mean, I would hope it'd make for a better road and less work for the city, so...
We're doing the grading, right?
Yes, we are.
And raising manholes?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion second, move this to the voting session to be held tonight, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go on to action required items. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-six, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and Southern Missouri Bank.
Move for first reading, caption only.
Second.
Ninety-three-six.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff to execute a lease agreement with Southern Bank for property located at Fifth and Vine Streets in Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Popper Bluff to execute a lease agreement with Southern Bank for property located at Fifth and Vine Streets in Poplar Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments?
I have a question. I noticed in the lease agreement, it said that we have to have some kind of written thing submitted to them, showing that anything that needs to be changed or added to. And I know previously, we talked about adding like a counter to the front lobby. Have we talked to them about doing that? Do they seem okay with that?
Just vaguely, they seem okay with it. I mean, we're, yeah, we're talking maybe a couple of counters, things like that, nothing major though.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, sure.
Did I read correctly in my package, they went down on the...
Yes, they, I asked them to go to twenty-five hundred a month instead of three, and they met me halfway and went at twenty-seven fifty, so...
Do we know when we'll be able to occupy the building?
I mean, I'm hoping we can move towards the end of September, first part of October.
Is it just a month by month?
It's...
One year, I think.
One year, and then a month by month after that.
And then month to month.
It's available for the city to move into at any time. The longer we wait, the more money we save. It extends it on, on the far end of it, but it's available immediately, subject to our, the modifications that we need, need to make on it. And they also waived any requirement for any security deposit as a part of the negotiations as well.
And Pam and I looked at it one more time this afternoon, so...
And everyone can fit, even the, right, okay, that's up.
I would think in light of this weather, the smog didn't get any better.
No, it's a...
I can tell.
I walked through the building today.
I'd be over here too, it was some kind of trash can.
Just seems to get worse and worse.
Let's go.
No other questions? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
No.
We have five yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-six is adopted. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-seven, the city council will take action on an ordinance providing for the levy and collection of property taxes for the year beginning January one, two thousand and sixteen, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, for the following purposes. One, general revenue. Two, police and firemen's pension fund to be levied and collected as to all property in the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, both personal and real, except household goods located in private homes.
Move for first reading, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, bill number seventy-nine thirty-seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of property taxes for the year beginning January first, two thousand and sixteen, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, for the following purposes. Number one, general revenue. Number two, policeman and firemen's pension fund to be levied and collected as to all property in the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, both personal and real, except household goods located in private homes.
Move for second reading, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of property taxes for the year beginning January first, two thousand and sixteen, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, for the following purposes. Number one, general revenue. Number two, policeman and firemen's pension fund to be levied and collected on all property in the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, both personal and real, except household goods located in private homes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for the adoption of bill number seventy-nine thirty-seven, all, or roll call, please.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
And seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-seven is adopted. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-eight, the city council will take action on an ordinance establishing a procedure for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Move for first reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, bill number seventy-nine thirty-eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance establishing a procedure for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Move for second reading, in caption only, of bill seventy-nine thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance establishing a procedure for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Move for adoption of seven-nine thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion second for the adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-eight is passed. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-nine, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid from Big River Phone Company for the city's telecommunications services.
Move for first reading, in caption only, of seven-nine thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance accepting a bid for telecommunications services for the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading, seventy-nine thirty-nine, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance accepting a bid for telecommunications services for the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine thirty-nine is passed. Bill number seventy-nine forty, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number two for the city's street paving project, STP five-one-zero-zero-zero-nine.
Move for first reading of seventy-nine forty, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number two between the city of Popper Bluff and Schultz Surveying and Engineering Incorporated relating to engineering services for Project STP fifty-one-hundred-oh-oh-nine for the paving of various city streets.
Move for second reading of seventy-nine forty, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number two between the city of Popper Bluff and Schultz Surveying and Engineering, Inc., relating to engineering services for Project STP fifty-one-hundred-oh-oh-nine for the paving of various city streets.
Move for adoption of seven-nine forty.
Second.
Motion second for the adoption of seven-nine forty, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.[1797.88]
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Crocker?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine forty is passed. Resolution number eighteen forty-nine, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Missouri Department of Public Safety relative to a local law enforcement block grant for the police department.
Move for reading of resolution eighteen forty-nine, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the reading of resolution eighteen forty-nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application with the Missouri Department of Public Safety relative to a local law enforcement block grant for the Popper Bluff Police Department.
Move. Move for adoption of resolution number eighteen forty-nine.
Second.
Motion second for the adoption of eighteen forty-nine. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Crocker?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution number eighteen forty-nine is passed. Item DG was a closed session, there's no need for that, so we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, back on August fourth, that Thursday, we had a fish fry, a back-to-blue fish fry for the law enforcement officers. We had approximately a hundred and twenty law enforcement, Highway Patrol, Butler County Sheriff, City Police Department, and retirees, very successful in the end. I'd like to thank the Daily American Republic. We provided the facility, they provided the food. We had volunteers cook the fish, and a lot of camaraderie that day, and you can tell they really appreciated it. And as all of you know, last week, we suffered a devastation downtown with the loss of the building. I was out there most of the day. I wasn't much help, but I was watching a lot of our crews, street department, motor pool, utilities, fire, police. You know, they all just did a great job. And the amount of food that came in, and the water and Gatorade from the people in the community, just incredible, the backing that we get when something bad happens to Popper Bluff. This is a great community, and just wanted to say we appreciate everybody that helped that day. And on the flood issue, really been a great week here. New projections on the flood on Black River cresting at nineteen point seven in the middle of the night, so the last I heard, we were at eight point, eighteen point seven. So they're hoping it'll crest tonight and start going down.
I've got one thing.
Okay.
Downtown Popper Bluff, we had a meeting today, and we're trying to organize some community input on what people want. Those meetings are going to be the seventh, the eighth, and the thirteenth. One at noon and one at five-thirty. They're going to be the same meeting, we're just having more of them, see if we get more people involved. We would like the council to come to one of those meetings to share their input. So there's six meetings, there's six dates. So if you choose to come to one of them, we appreciate it. Hopefully, we can have them here in the council. We're just making sure there's nothing else to meet, so...
And what were the times, noon and five-thirty?
Noon and five-thirty. And we're just trying to take a different approach, see if we can get something done correctly.